Welcome everyone to our regular board meeting on November 2nd, 2020 at 6:00 PM. This time you sleep staying for our application and pledge. The board has come before you tonight to take care of the business of the county. We ask you to give us wisdom in these proceedings as we move forward. We also ask you to watch over this country as the days ahead are going to be rough. Just ask you to bring this country together, let us all be one again. And also tonight I would like to ask you to watch over two commissioners that will be leaving us, Mr. Richardson and Mr. Gamble. Ask you to watch over them and guide them for their future endeavors. Christ name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item we have tonight is approval amendments from October 20th, 2020 regular board meeting and also the October 27th, 2020 special call meeting. Do I have any questions, comments, or do I have a motion to approve? Got a motion by Commissioner.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamble, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed same sign. I will apologize, we got some technical difficulties tonight, but we're gonna work through. Moving ahead to our concerned agenda, we have items two, three, fourteen. Before we, I call for a motion and I'll ask Mr. Harris to offer some perp question on item number four.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes.
Not working at a hundred percent. I just want to touch on a few details on this agenda item under the CARES Act funding. We received a phone call. Any of you that have followed this issue since it started recognize that the guidance that's been issued has changed half a dozen or more times over the last several months. About a week ago, we received a phone call and said that they're now encouraging us, we got a call from the state saying they're encouraging us to go ahead and reimburse ourselves for the cost of our emergency medical personnel that have been handling all these calls. So we've done that, this plan reflects that. But they notified us as well and said that they want a plan from us because they want to start releasing some funding. We don't get those types of calls very often. Usually we're waiting for funding. So we had to go ahead and put a plan together, this plan reflects the cost of the reimbursement of the emergency medical personnel during this timeframe along with other expenses that we have actually already incurred for personal protective equipment and other expenses. Very likely, we will not be able to collect everything that's shown on the plan that we put together because we may not have enough expenses to cover everything that they've allocated. So I just wanted to explain that to you, that we prepared a plan that's really a worst-case scenario for us and if we get reimbursements for half of these things, I'll be pretty excited. But I think we're gonna get a whole lot more than that. That will have a huge impact on other expenses and other budget plans that we had approved with the budget because we can go back now and make some adjustments. Anyway, I just wanted to explain that before the board considers it.
Yes, sir. Do you have a dollar amount, approximately, whatever that dollar amount is?
Well, the dollar amount that we're looking at right, we're looking at roughly eight million dollars. So we could probably potentially throw a Christmas party at the end of the year if we get all this money.
That would be great.
But in any event, that's what they have allocated, a little over eight million dollars to Swanee County. I don't believe that we will collect all of that. We will collect everything that we could justify, given the guidance that they have given us to date. If they call back next week and give us different guidance, that would not surprise me because like I said, it's been evolving. It was so restrictive when it first started that there wasn't much of anything that we could do with it. But that has changed. So they're trying to cover legitimate expenses, more of the legitimate expenses that we've actually incurred throughout the last year.
At this time, on the concerned agenda, I have items two, three, fourteen. Do I have any questions, comments, or do I have a motion to approve?
Move through. Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Gamble, second by Commissioner Richardson, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed same sign, motion carries. At this time, we move ahead to item number fifteen, this is time specific. At 6:05 PM or assume thereafter, if the matter can be heard, hold a public hearing to consider adoption of a resolution approving special term after temporary use request number SPTU dash two zero dash one zero dash zero one by American Promotional Events, BBA, TNT Fireworks to grant a special term after temporary use under section fourteen point one zero of the Swanee County Land Developer Regulations for Fireworks Tent Sale to be held starting December twenty-sixth, twenty twenty through January first, twenty twenty-one on property zone for brush on intensive, Mr. Ron Meeks. At this time, before we go any further, if anyone wishes to be heard on this matter, he's standing to be sworn in by our county attorney. Seeing none, move forward, Mr. Meeks.
Well, Mr. Meeks, this is sworn in. Mr. Meeks, do you swear affirm the testimony you gave before the board to see him to be the true self of God?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, board members, I believe this is the fourth year that American Promotional Events, TNT Fireworks has submitted their temporary use permit applications. They do an event twice a year, one in July and the other one at New Year's for January. So this is the actual eighth application that the board has had for their consideration. There have been no changes through the application, site location remains the same in the Walmart parking area where they will construct a tent, it's a temporary tent that's placed and the duration of the event would be December twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty through January first of twenty twenty-one. They also have to acquire a permit through our fire marshal's office. Tim White goes out and does an inspection with their fire extinguishers and everything to make sure they're compliant for that. We've never had any complaints with their event, seem to put up and tear down fairly quickly and be out of until the next July. The application went before our planning and zoning board for advisory decision to the commission on last Thursday night's meeting. The motion that the planning and zoning board was an advisory decision to the board to approve. So you have a resolution for you tonight asking for approval for the temporary use of the fireworks tent sale.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks, do I have any question from the board from Mr. Meeks at this time? Seeing none, I'll open the floor and public comment, I have anyone from the public wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. At this time, do we have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Good to adopt. Second.
I got a motion by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Gamble, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed same sign, motion carries for Ivo. At this time, we'll close public here, thank you, Mr. Meeks. Moving ahead to item number sixteen, discuss with possible board action and final plat approval of Kingwood Estate subdivision.
Mr. Chairman, board members, this is a subdivision that had previously came before you and the action on board was to take on the issue until some corrections could be made. Total size of the subdivision is a twenty point zero four acre parcel containing a total of four or five acre lots. Access to the property is off of one hundred and eighty-fifth road. Preliminary approval was given by the board back in June of two thousand twenty. So we have the final plat that's been prepared by the surveyor reviewed for compliance to chapter one seventy-seven Florida statutes and before the commission tonight asking for final approval.
At this time, do I have any questions from the board from Mr. Meeks on this matter?
Why is everybody looking at me?
I was looking down.
Mr. Meeks.
Mister, I don't have any questions.
What do we actually need for this far?
They can go ahead and move forward, we'll say how timely you think that they did respond to the items that we needed to be able then to move forward with it. Within a short time after our last meeting, everything was corrected and ready to go.
All for motion to approve final plat.
I got a motion by Commissioner Gamble, second by Commissioner Fleming, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed same sign, motion carries for Ivo. Moving right along to item seventeen. Discuss with possible board action preliminary and final plat approval of Freedom Farms subdivision, Mr. Meeks.
Mr. Chairman, board members, this is a preliminary and final plat approval for Freedom Farms subdivision. Location, this subdivision's in section four, township four south, range thirteen east. Size of the proposed site is fifteen point zero three acres with a total of three lots that contain five point zero one acres each. The access for the lots will be off of one hundred and twenty-ninth road, which is an existing county paper route. By definition, this is a little different than most of the subdivisions the board has to consider in that exactly three lots is defined as a minor subdivision, so there is no new road construction involved in a minor subdivision that usually fronts an existing road. So with three lots only, the board will have the authority to give a preliminary and final and one approval, if not a two-step process, a lot of the subdivisions that you come, that come before you have a preliminary approval and then come back to the board for a final approval. With a subdivision that just contains three lots, you do it all in one motion. So we have the application, the title opinion has been prepared and the final plat has been prepared with the chairman's signature if you so choose to approve that tonight.
At this time, do I have any questions from Mr. Meeks?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Richards.
This is the first time I've seen a plat approval that had poultry houses on it.
The poultry houses are no longer in production, the carrots and everything's been taken away from them. They're basically disused for agricultural storage. So they reverted their use from intensive ag to just an ag storage building. The existing structures on the property meeting required setbacks that the land use regulations require for, you also have an existing dwelling unit on the southernmost lot as well.
At this time, do I have a motion? Second, a motion, a motion by Commissioner Fleming, second by Commissioner Gamble, did I hear that correctly?
Yes, sir.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed same sign, motion carries for Ivo.
Mr. Chairman, might I address the board for just a second on those matters or address your later?
Do you have a comment, you're welcome.
But just a comment, I mean, Tim Alcorn, right here live, these are my plats, I'm the representative for these plats. As Mr. Privat said, the problems with the Kingswood plats were taken care of quickly. Had I have received a phone call that day, that morning from someone, they could have been addressed and taken care of that day and we would not be here again tonight. I think it was a little unprofessional by someone within the county that I did not receive a phone call that day and I was land blasted that night at the meeting. Been doing plats in this county for forty years plus. I've never been treated the way I was treated in your prior meeting. And I think it could be done in a different way from here going forward, thank you.
Fair enough. At this time, do I have anyone from the public wishing to speak on any matters? Seeing none, I'll close public comment at this time. Mr. Harris, do you have anything for us? At this time, I got a small presentation. As most of you know, we have two commissioners that's gonna be leaving us here shortly. We do really have, I guess, one more meeting, but this is basically the last formal meeting we have. I just wanted to come up and say a few words and just tell you that we appreciate your service to the county. Basically, we got a plaque here that says, presented to Ronnie Richardson, appreciation for your service and dedication to the citizens of Swanee County, twenty sixteen through twenty twenty from the Swanee County Board of Commissioners. So I just want to say thank you for that, Mr. Meeks. Also, I got here with Commissioner Gamble. Presented to Ricky Gamble, appreciation for your service and dedication to the citizens of Swanee County from two thousand twelve through two thousand twenty. Presented to you by Swanee County Board of County Commissioners.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
We appreciate both of you and what you've done. You've both been assets to the county. I know we have some butt heads at times, but that's just part of doing business. I think we have some department heads and some other folks would like to come up and say a few words and appreciation to both of you, so at this time, I'm gonna come up.
Glad to echo the chairman's comments, appreciate your service, the pleasure we're with both you gentlemen. We got some things done, got some things in the works moving forward. And again, thank you all for your, your hearts were in the right place and helping the county. So again, thank you very much and anything we do for you later, just let us know, thank you.
Well, there's not a whole lot that any of us can say that hasn't already been said, but we definitely thank you very much for both of you guys. And I genuinely want to thank you both for your support of fire rescue over the years. Commissioner Gamble, you were involved a little longer. But both of you guys have supported us and we really, really appreciate that. And good luck in both of your future endeavors as you move forward.
Okay, sorry, I'd just like to say I've enjoyed working on both of you. It's been maybe eight years, it's been a good four years. I appreciate the way that both of you have worked with my staff as well because it's where that goes along with. But it's where that both of you were very courteous to my staff and it's where that they enjoyed working with you as well. So Ricky, I reckon you'll be across the street, if you will, just don't be parking on my parking spot. It's been a pleasure working on both of you, all right?
Yeah, I kind of concur with some of the things they said, but yeah, not all of it maybe. But I do appreciate you guys very much, not only in this job, but back, you know, when I was over the chamber, both of you were supporters of that and helped me out and all the events and the things that we were doing when we came to the county, we needed support, you guys were always there, means a lot. Couple of things that I do want to remember is when we were in Tallahassee and everybody kind of bailed out on the meeting that night, I think you and I did, going to see Senator Bradley. And we were sitting at the table and you asked him, what did he think about you running for senator? I wasn't sure how to react to that because I didn't know if he was gonna come across the table and hit me or hit him or, you know, but it was, it was a good, it was a good comment and I want to thank you for those times. And of course, Commissioner Gamble, we kind of spent more time together than you with the chair and we traveled and went to conferences and had a lot of good discussions, you taught me a lot. And I know you're gonna continue to teach me a lot across the street, I agree, don't be taking our parking spots up too much. But you know, when he was running, if you guys remember, we were working real hard to, working in the hemp industry real hard last year. Well, Commissioner Gamble and I went to five, six different conferences and several actual farms. So every once in a while, every week or so, I'd send him a little picture of him standing in front of them big old hemp plants and say, hey, you know, does this need to go public or do we need to kind of keep this under until the votes are in? So but he really.
He bragged a little bit on that.
Yeah, yeah, but he did a great job and he, we did, we traveled and we did a lot with that, so we'll see. But I wish you both the best and I appreciate you very much, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, anybody else that likes to speak more, welcome to come up.
I didn't realize I would have this privilege when I came here tonight, I'm Millie Griswold. I live in Dowling Park community and I recognize some of your faces, I may not remember your names. But I must say, I don't know this gentleman. But I've lived in Dowling Park twenty-three years and during that time, I'm an old woman by the way. During that time, I have adopted a few boys and I call them my boys. And this right here is one of my boys. And this right here is another of my boys. Because in various ways, we have worked together over the years for the good of Swanee County. And I'm proud of both of them. I'd like to thank you gentlemen for what you have, whoops, what you have done for the Dowling Park community in the last ten years. Now, you've worked longer than that for us, but I was reviewing just recently as I stood in the village archive and looked out the window how in ten years, you folks have already left a legacy for Dowling Park. And we worked through one of my boys to see these things accomplished. I can stand in the village archive and watch an ambulance leave the fire rescue building and know that they're going out to save a couple of people's lives. I mean, this happens every day. It's not only the village, but the whole Dowling Park community that is served. And then low and behold, here goes a fire truck, sometimes two fire trucks going out to save somebody's property and somebody's life. I turn around, look out another window and what do I see? A stream of kids and adults coming into a public library, getting books, working on computers, attending seminars and having discussions. So I want to thank you gentlemen for what you have done and are doing for the Dowling Park community. We don't say it too often, but we do appreciate it very much. I find when I see all of these things happening, whoops, out of the archive, I say, thank you, Lord, but then I also add, thank you, Board of County Commissioners, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your comments, that means a lot to us. I don't know if this is gonna be good or bad.
Tonight is gonna be good. I just want to say to the two that are leaving, the three that are here and the two new ones coming. I've been doing this for a number of years. I've seen commissioners coming and going. And by and large, every one of them has been a good commissioner, they've all worked for the betterment of Swanee County. To both Ronnie and Ricky, I've enjoyed working with them. We kind of agreed to disagree on a few occasions, especially Mr. Gamble. But that's okay, we'll continue, he's done a good job, Ronnie's done an excellent job also. And I look forward to working with the remaining three and the two new ones that are be coming in. Just from, this is just from one of the taxpayers' point of view, I just want to say thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hancock. Have any more else in the audience wishing to speak? At this time, Commissioner Fleming, I'll let you have some comments, we'll be closing comments separate, but this is about the two commissioners that's leaving us.
Kind of bitter this week, I stopped Commissioner Richardson very, he is short and thin and I have it. When we come to Poland, I can look at his face.
My body.
Anyway, Commissioner Richardson and I, we've done some things together. We went up to Fluka, Washington, up to DC. And we got to answer some offices, he had a lot of offices and they had dinner with him and did a lot of things. Even the workshop that we went to, they were very attentive because he liked to speak. We went up to Tallahassee, we'd be together and then you'd go and you'd come back, but he loved to get around. It's been some good times been with Commissioner Richardson and I'll honestly say that I enjoy working with you. They get chit-chatting time to time and I hope I see you, you know, time to time, I really appreciate working with you. And God bless you. Mr. Gamble, we worked together for eight years, and that eight years, we flew also, flew up to DC to the White House together. I also flew, he took it out on me, at the last minute, we were going to Nashville. All the time that he wasn't gonna make that trip, but Commissioner Richardson drove right there. Anyway, I really enjoy working with you, you and my son, same age, I always look at you as my son. You know, even though you served on this commission together and I've learned some things from you. You know, you can always learn and that's been good. And I appreciate your family, I appreciate working with you, looking forward to working with you at the property, pray to God. So I say, keep your head up, be the best that you can be, do the best that you can do, be all that you can be. God protect you, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Just to clarify, Commissioner Fleming, we're all his sons.
He shakes your hand and you look up at him.
Commissioner Ham.
I ain't gonna say that. No, it's been an honor, guys, we both have it. You know, we've had four good years here, I also learned a lot from Ricky being our chairman. I didn't know either one of these guys before I become a county commissioner. Probably a virtue of mine, wasn't always in the areas, but you were already a woman.
Come through the territory.
Yeah, come through the territory. But I've enjoyed it, I have enjoyed our discussions, our hard discussions up here, the challenges that we've had, but we've worked with them together. I think that speaks a lot for both of you, are really good. I'm just honored, I think you guys make us a better person, a better commissioner, and I wish you the best for me, bro.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, thank you guys.
At this time, we will have closing comments and we'll start with you, Commissioner Richardson. And you always have something to say, so yeah.
Well, I would, I would like to say how privileged I have been to serve the people of Swanee County as well as the people of District Five in particular. Never thought that I would ever be an elected official, never wanted ever to be an elected official. But somebody asked me and, twice, and I prayed and the good Lord said, go, and I did. And I've always depended on that divine guidance for my direction. And when he said the time was up, it was up and I appreciate that, so. So I've got good closure, I think we've done good things as a board. In the last four years, we've moved economic development along quite a bit. We've seen a change in that leadership, we've made some strides with infrastructure, we've got some things done. We've made some strides with infrastructure, we've got some things done that still need to be completed. And I honestly believe that you guys, who's gonna be back, who's gonna be here, will complete those, that work. We've managed to improve our fire and EMS services dramatically with their equipment and given them the tools to take care of our citizens. And I can't be more proud of that. We didn't always agree with how it was gonna get done, but Jamie was a tip of the spear when he was here and pushed it, pushed it, and Eddie has completed a lot of all that, all that he tried to get done. And now we got one more fire station coming in and serving the north end, so that's been good. We've seen a lot of things take place. I'm appreciative of Greg so much, because I've worked well with Greg on Parks Recreation, seeing that the south end of the county, it's pretty much all we've got. And he's worked with me, and I've appreciated everything, all of his leadership, all of his direction, especially his advice in dealing with governmental agencies, and so I appreciate that. I challenge you guys. You guys too. We have set a direction for this county. We have pointed the ship in a direction that I believe is the right direction. Keep it moving in the right direction. Don't let the people who want to take it back to where it used to be get their way. This is a new county. Give everyone, every single person, even those people who have moved here from other places, and they have brought their ideas, some of them good, some of them not so good, give them a voice, listen to them. Best thing you can do is get a balanced idea of where your county wants to go, and then work together to get it done. And I will give one piece of advice to Franklin, Commissioner O'Leary. Don't take anything or anyone for granted. And that, I appreciate everything you guys have done for me and all that we've worked for. Thank you, guys.
A little bit over three minutes, but we're gonna let you slide. Commissioner Gammel?
First, I just want to thank everyone. You know, I'm sitting here looking at over the room, at just the people here tonight. Two thousand twelve, when I got elected, there was four people in here I can say I knew. Two of them from school, three of them from school, and one of them, my mom and dad hanging out at the river when we were growing up. Other than that, I didn't know anybody, but there's not a person in here over the last eight years that I haven't worked with closely and I consider a friend. I don't consider it an end, I say it's a new begin. We're still gonna work together, just in a different capacity. I've learned so much, that's my time on the board. You know, you run for office, and you think, I've got this, I know what to do, then you actually win, you go, crap, what now was? And you sit up here, and running for office is not the same thing as being in office, and y'all will find that out. Franklin and Travis pretty quick, that it's completely different. But if you listen to your people, respect them, the biggest thing is listen to them, and do what you're telling them you're gonna do, it's an enjoyable office to hold. You're always gonna get those few that call you aggravated, and they're gonna get off the phone aggravated, and there's just nothing you can do for them, but majority of the people just want to be heard and listened to, and by listening to them and then talking to them, you can usually figure out their problem. Sometimes you can fix it, sometimes you gotta explain to them why you can't fix it. But it's been enjoyable. I've enjoyed working with each one of y'all. Other than Ronnie, I don't think I knew any of y'all when I got elected. Same thing with two thousand twelve, when I got elected on the board. I didn't know anyone on it, but we've worked good together. I did watch the board previous to me coming on in two thousand twelve, Fuzz, Spite, and not work good together, but they did work together. And it has been enjoyable, especially the last four years, being with a group of gentlemen that have disagreements, but come together and will work together for the best interest of Swanee County. And I appreciate that. Mr. Harris, we didn't always work good together the first four years, and then I got reelected and got elected chairman, and I know that night, you had to be like, holy, leave. But we worked good together, yin and yang, I guess you might say, but I enjoyed working with you, and I think we got a lot accomplished over, especially the last three, four years. A lot of it hasn't come to fruition yet, but as far as, it's in place, and the funding's there, and it's going to. So I think we'll, my overall goal is always to say, I just want to leave it better than I found it. I just pray that the future shows that it is. Last thing, I just want y'all to remember, next year, when you get your trim notice in the mail, property appraiser only assesses your property, board of county commissioner raises your taxes. Thank y'all.
Got something way out the door there.
You have anything to, other, you know?
I think I said it all again, I miss you two gentlemen, and I'm looking forward to working with the other two gentlemen out there. Ricky said, it's different, especially when you look out, you know? I think the first time I got into what I almost said in there, when I was used to that, being in service, and it kind of caught me, I said, you know, had to realize when I was there. Used to looking out in congregation and talking to people in the bedroom, but this was somewhat different. I used to be shy. Now she laughing. We've been together, well, this week will be forty-one years we've been married.
Congratulations.
I never got to talk. Again, I enjoy working with y'all, these guys, and we, this is a group of lovely commissioners. You know, the time is winding down, you know, and I have my time, my time, you know, that time comes, that time arrives. I'm very thankful, grateful to be here, and working with these gentlemen, and looking forward to sending them in. I'll be sending them, and more information, and we'll be property appraised, I call them, yeah. So again, I am grateful and glad, grateful to be with you gentlemen, thank you.
Commissioner Hill, closing comments?
Not really. Commissioner Fleming, he mentioned his anniversary, wasn't he, last year, guys? He said we were saving a lot for a cheeseburger.
And then we have it my way, a burger cake.
All the time flies.
We do congratulate them on that. Again, and I'll just follow up, everyone in here really appreciates what you two guys have done. And I didn't say I want to go, but on top of being a better person, I do have two new friends. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I'd just like to close with, just appreciate you guys. I'm just grateful to be back in this building, it just feels like home. The sound's not echoing off the walls, other than we do have some problems tonight, we'll get those worked out. But we got some distance in out there, but we still got people joining us. Glad to see this room here, glad to see the young lady from, out of Dowling Park come to visit us. Mr. Blue, I see Mr. Blue out here.
I want to, can I say something? Yeah, Mr. Blue was just chatting with you, he got reappointed to the, to the, the Bell Hattler. He called me, you know, he called me, see the phone call from him, and I called him, he said, we will. And thank you for your being here, thank you.
Yes, I'm be reporting that, supporting. But I'm just grateful to be back here, and hopefully we can move into this next year and get this virus behind us and continue to get things done. Appreciate our office staff, as always, for making us look good up here. And...
Most of the time.
Most of the time. I guess that's really all we got. No, I think Mandy did want to come up to the podium and had a couple of comments. I'm just teasing.
I said it probably gonna be PG.
All I need is a motion to adjourn.
Slow move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hill? Second by Commissioner Fleming, all in favor, say aye. Thank you.